Good evening and welcome to the April regular meeting, the Olathe Board of Education. Can I get a roll call?
Mr. Wickler?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. McCune?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
All right, will you all stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with our public comments, but before that, we'll have Brian Reed. Mr. Gary Reed here.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. A staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcasts on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
Thank you. We have three speakers tonight, and our first speaker is Holly Palacio.
Hello again. I am Holly Palacio. My husband Louis and I have three children, only one of whom is a neurotypical learner, and the two others have either a learning disability or more complex special needs. During our more than 12 years at the district, we have encountered every form of frustration with the status quo of dyslexia identification, remediation, and accommodation. Our story mirrors many in our district and across the country. As early as preschool, we saw differences in the way our son learned. One day, he knew his letters; the next, he didn't. When he was in kindergarten, he was reading four grade levels behind, or, er, four levels behind going into first grade. We were assured, "He'll catch up. He's smart." In first grade, with a teacher truly passionate about all things reading, he struggled. He was pulled out for spelling and reading. Again, no mention of any need for further evaluation. We were told, "Even if he gets diagnosed, there isn't anything I can do to help him." In second grade, because we knew something wasn't adding up, he was diagnosed ADHD and needed glasses. There, we have a diagnosis. There was small improvement in his mood and class behavior. Then, third grade hit. In third grade, you stop learning to read, and now you're reading to learn. He was lost. His whole demeanor changed. Our happy bubbly jokester was gone. He hated getting up to go to school. His teacher was the bright spot, and, how bless her, she tried everything to help. Fourth grade, more the same, including another fantastic teacher willing to do whatever. Time multiplication tests, where he's soul-crushing exercise, and spelling tests took him started. We started timing homework, so we didn't exceed great appropriate amounts of time on homework. He was still falling behind, however, getting angrier and started telling us he was stupid. Something we knew was not true. All of this with not even a 504 plan in place after requesting evaluation because he was doing fine. But something was not fine, and it took outside family to recommend getting tested for dyslexia. Now we can get help, right? Wrong. So, so wrong. Let this be the last time this is ever uttered on a Olathe South public property, a Olathe School District property. We heard for the first time, "Dyslexia is a medical condition. We accommodate, but we don't treat." Never again let it be said. We were completely unprepared for the brick wall we ran into trying to get the district to teach our son to read. It was counterintuitive. We were stunned, speechless, at the end of first quarter in sixth grade, where he was evaluated by an outside literacy center, reading at a lower grade level, that he did not qualify for specific curriculum that we discovered the district had as a resource because it was only used in elementary school. I hope the presentation you will hear later tonight will address these primary concerns. Will the online screener be supplemented with teacher observations and parent input for those students the screener may miss? Will this new K-35 curriculum be implemented with fidelity? No mix and match with other curriculums. No, this is how we do it in Olathe, because all over, the 95% group documentation is a requirement to implement the program as designed. Will teachers have access, not only to the minimum required six hours of training, but any supplemental training? They feel the need. With access to 95% group support, as the documentation states, is their recommended best practices. And will middle and high school students identified in need of remediation have access to it via resource or ELA teachers trained to help them? If it takes assigning specific classes for ELA in high school and middle school, it would be well worth the investment. The reason that I ask is that there is a price. $400 a month in tutoring for two to three years, depending on the age of a student when tutoring begins. Anywhere from $16,000 to $45,000 a year for two to three years of private specialty school facing families if their student is not able to learn to read in public school. I pray I am the last family member of a dyslexic student who has got to come and speak to you because our student was not taught to read while in district classrooms. We were given advice by council to spend our dollars getting our child what he needed instead of tilting it windmills and trying to turn the Titanic. We did that, but we tilted just a little bit, and Dan and I went to the Kansas Education Hearing to testify in support of the State Dyslexia Task Force. I am hopeful, but I am concerned that turning the Titanic is not fast enough for many middle and high school students. I know that the teachers in your classrooms are some of the best, and I know that they do not know what they do not know. It is the greatest challenge you will face in this new path, and I will help in any way I can. A powerful tool is a simulation exercise. Many can be found online, and I can offer myself to provide training as needed. It will take these kinds of exercises to undo the decades of messaging that says, "This is a disorder that can only be accommodated," and I believe it is our greatest hurdle in making this 95% curriculum a success. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing the story there. Our next speaker is Daniel Palacio.
Hello, my name is Daniel Palacio. I am a sophomore at Olathe South High School. Elementary school was the toughest time of my life. I was put in the system set up to fail me, and I was never taught how to read from the school district. When we found out I was dyslexic, I thought the school would help me, but instead, I had completed all the resource assignments that they said I needed, and I still couldn't read. Going into fifth grade, nothing changed, and everything got harder. I first got the private school, and I thought they were going to do the same thing that they did in elementary school. I got in my Ingles class, and it was easier. It gave me the time I needed and the resources I needed to learn how to read properly. My tutor was the best person I have ever known. She was dyslexic like myself. She liked me and who I was. She was there for me, and she genuinely wanted to help me. She put more time into me in three years than the school district, than the Olathe School District put into me in the seven years I was in there. I hope this new program helped kids like myself to learn how to read in your school district. Thank you for that.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Megan Bricks.
Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Megan Bricks, and I want to thank you for allowing me to come back and speak tonight. I have made a promise to myself and to you all to always show up and use my voice as an educator. This year has been one of the most challenging years of my career thus far. It's only been three years, but still the hardest, but it has also been one of the most valuable. I have learned so much about myself and how to stand up for what I truly believe in. I'm extremely grateful to be able to teach this year. I'm extremely grateful to have, finally have a fourth quarter with my students. I'm extremely grateful to teach music this year, and I'm extremely grateful to be able to continue doing what I love. This pandemic has changed a lot of things, but through this, I have continued to learn and grow as an educator. This year in particular, I have learned a valuable lesson that I want to share with you tonight. Everyone has the right to their own opinion. We then must value each person's opinion. No matter what we believe, we have to be okay with people having different views than us. A great example of this was brought about with the pandemic. Each person has their own comfort level, and we should respect that everyone feels differently about their own personal safety. Another example, within a school building, every educator and staff member has the right to have their own opinions. Not everyone is going to agree, and that's okay. We have to learn to be okay with moving forward with differing opinions. We work hard as educators to help our students find their voice. The Leader in Me program has allowed multiple across our district, Olathe students to truly engage in finding their voice at the elementary level. Once they have found their voice, we then work to provide them opportunities and outlets to use their voice. All while doing this, we model, as the teachers, respect for differing opinions so that our students will learn to value our differences instead of allowing those differences to come between us and create barriers. As we approach the end of a truly unique school year, I hope that you, as our Board of Education and administration here tonight, make sure to value the differences in opinions amongst yourselves, the administration, staff, students, and families. We are all working for a common goal here in Olathe: high academic expectations for all, behavior and social emotional development for all, human capital, effective systems, and prioritized resources. We all won't agree about all those things, and all that's going to happen, and that's okay. But as the Board of Education, my hope is that you will model this behavior we hope to instill within our students: to value our differences instead of allowing those differences to come between us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, and that concludes our public comments for this evening. We're going to jump right into information presentations and get a graduate update from Mr. Albers.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing a couple of minutes tonight for me to share with you a very brief update on graduation 2021. Graduation information was sent to senior parent on March 8, so a few weeks ago. That message contains some very general information, reminders on dates, times, location, weather contingency plan, those types of things. The high school graduation ceremonies are scheduled for May 14 through the 16, and will be held outdoors at College Boulevard Activity Center, or SEBAC as we refer to it, as they were last year. Olathe West High School is on Friday, May 14, at 7:00 p.m. Olathe North then goes on Saturday, May 15, at 2:00 p.m. Olathe South also on Saturday, May 15, at 7:00 p.m. And then, Olathe East on Sunday, May 16, at 2:00, and then Northwest wraps us up on Sunday, May 16, at 7:00 p.m. Now, the question always with outdoor activities is inclement weather, right? Should there be inclement weather on the scheduled date or time of one of those ceremonies? The ceremony would be rescheduled either that Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday of the following week, so that would be May 17 through 19, and again, be outdoors at SEBAC. Some general logistics to keep in mind: to allow for distancing at graduation, each graduate will be given six tickets for guests to attend the ceremony. All guests will need a ticket to enter the stadium. The seniors will be seated on the football field, as they have in past years, and then that event, for people that can't make it down for the event or are unable to attend, will be livestreamed and available to watch on a couple of different platforms, so that it will work for everyone, no matter what type of technology they have or what kind of app they use. We're going to stream it on a couple of different platforms. The individual schools are going to share a lot more information and details on their ceremonies, their individual ceremonies coming up. Information such as graduation practice, when and how to pick up caps and gowns, pick up tickets, and any other items needed for graduation, and any logistics that are specific to their individual ceremony. So they'll be sending that information out, and I anticipate that coming out from the individual high schools to both seniors and senior parents in the near future, probably in the next couple of weeks. We're looking forward, obviously, to celebrating our Class of 2021 in all five high schools. Excited for that. And is there any questions that anyone had pertinent to the ceremony or individual school?
Any questions?
And we've ordered Sunny and 72 for those three days, so we'll see if that pans out.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
I was just going to ask Mr. Albers, the prom information went out this week as well. Is that correct?
Yes, it did. Prom information went out with the dates of the different high school proms and very general information. The individual schools will communicate more logistics and what each individual prom looked like, but the dates and time were all sent out earlier this week also.
Awesome. Thank you.
I was just going to say to remember to have some sunscreen for Mr. McCune, who's forgotten at the last couple of meetings.
I will make sure to have the large bottle of sunscreen.
Thank you, Mr. Albers.
Absolutely. I'll take care of you.
Thank you, Mr. President. All right. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, now, I think we have a quick talk, although it's not on the schedule, with Dr. Jaeger talking a little bit about an update on virtual school.
Yes. Thank you for just a little bit of time to give you kind of an update on our Olathe Virtual School. You're helping me out there, Ron. Okay, good. So today, actually, at about 10 o'clock this morning, our website went live in conjunction with communication out to our families. So, as you remember from our last Board of Education meeting, we talked quite a bit about the website and all that was going to be there and how it'd be kind of the storehouse for all information. So I just wanted to take just a couple of minutes and walk you through what that looks like and the information that we have available to our community on our website. So, and by the way, I would be remiss not to thank Marlene Coligan in our communications department, and Maggie Colb and her team, and TJ and Ryan, our virtual school gurus, who are a couple rows back to answer any of the hard questions that may come up tonight related to our virtual school, but they have all been working around the clock to have this ready for our community. So the first piece is really just general information, and one of the things that we know we need to do with our virtual school is make it very clear what it is and what it's about, because you all know we're not able to just transition from remote learning this year into next year, that kind of thing. So we have to be careful to make sure that our families and our students know exactly what it is they're signing up for. So there's a lot of information about Olathe Virtual School, just in general, parent zone, so that's where there will be updated newsletters for our parents with things happening with virtual school. You may notice the first official Raptor report is on there already, so check that out if, when you have a minute. Information about how parents can support their students at home in terms of learning coaches, and then also general calendar things that will be coming up as well. The next piece is student support, so it talks about, and we'll have more added to it, about where the process will go and how that will work, and some of that also, of course, was in our letter, and then again, similar thing with student support. Course options, that's one of the areas that families will want to pay close attention to when they have the opportunity to go to the website and check it out. There are some sample schedules there, but then at each level, it also has what the course offerings are for each level, elementary, middle, and high. Talks about learning modes, so a little bit to what was shared at our last board meeting, just the difference between asynchronous and synchronous learning, what that will look like and how that changes as our students grow older during time, and then just a little bit more definition related to that. Special services support, this is a really important one for us. We've had a lot of questions. Do you believe that you will be able to support students who have special education needs or students who receive ELL support, students that have a 504, and these guys have done an amazing job of meeting with all of our teams across the system, interfacing with other districts about how this is best done in a virtual platform. So that information is all available for our parents and our students there as well, so they can have a sense of those supports. Contact us. Ryan Huff's information is there, and the assistant working with the virtual school, Angela, their email boxes and phones have been blowing up since about 10 o'clock this morning with lots of questions and that kind of thing. Interestingly enough, one of the reoccurring themes already is families who at some point in the last few years have chosen to attend a virtual school outside of Olathe. There's been a number of phone calls from those families saying, "We're excited you're doing this. We'd love to be back in Olathe. Tell us more about it." So that word is out, which is great. We're appreciative of that happening. They're also collecting frequently asked questions, so there's another link where they'll update that based on the questions coming in from our families. Excuse me. They've also created an online forum for questions, so they can follow up to families that way. And then there's also two nights scheduled for parents to listen, to come and ask questions and learn about our virtual school also in an attempt to make a decision. And then, the application is there. It talks about the guidelines, all the different pieces, and really what that looks like when families apply. So a whole lot of information. I just summarized in about a minute and a half. As of right now, this time, since 10 o'clock this morning, we have 51 applications already in, and we have over 90 staff members who have applied to work within our virtual school. So the word is out even before this went live today, because some things have happened pretty quickly. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, or call these two guys up to answer any questions also.
Yeah, Dr. Jaeger, I was going to ask a couple of things. One, what is our, do we have our limit number? Do we know that yet as far as the max? And then, two, the, like, people who move into the district, that type of thing, is there, will they be able to do this? And lastly, are we getting input or collecting names of those people that have done virtual school in other districts in the past and just learning from them as far as what works and what's worked well for them?
Do you mean in terms of families?
Yeah, the ones that you said have been reaching out that have been doing virtual school at other places, that we've been kind of taking their input, community input on that.
I'll let these guys answer that piece. They've talked to lots and lots of people. In terms of our overall population, we're looking at about 3% of our student population. It's kind of a cap for our virtual school, which is roughly around 1,000 kids. You know, we're looking at those numbers closely and, you know, can make small adjustments, but as we talked about last month as well, we want to be sure we do this right in terms of launching a virtual school and those pieces. You know, by their nature, virtual schools aren't always extremely successful, and so we want to be sure that we do this in a manageable way for us to be able to have a positive lift for our students and our families. In terms of the families that would move into the area, if we have availability in the virtual school, they could enroll in the virtual school just like they would any other school. So if we have a family that between now and enrollment time in July moves here, has a contract on a home in our district, that kind of thing, or a lease, we'd allow them to enroll in the virtual school as well, if we have the space.
Yeah, and to answer your question about, about working with other districts that have set up virtual schools, we've been working alongside with Blue Valley almost all the way through because they're basically in the same boat we are as far as developing this and working on this. We are also working alongside with Lawrence Virtual School as well. They've been doing this a long time. And anyway, so we've been learning a lot from them and their processes, and we just started connecting with Omaha Virtual School, which is the only virtual school in Nebraska, and so it's really nice to communicate with somebody, and I know that she feels the same way because she's alone in her state doing something that is, you know, innovative. And so we definitely have been tapping into other places and people and trying to figure out as much as we can so we can have the best school we can for our latest students.
One thing I may add in terms of feedback from families, and some of it was even before today, but I've had an opportunity to visit with a couple of parents in our district over the last couple of months who were interested in the fact that we were doing this and potentially coming back to Olathe. One of the struggles that many virtual schools have are class sizes, meaning that many times they'll have a fourth grade class with 45, 50 kids in it and one instructor, that kind of thing. Some of that's available through a completely asynchronous platform where it's students working on their own and then checking in with the teacher, which obviously is not the model that we're going to use in Olathe. And one of the things that I think will be attractive, especially for some of our families who have chosen to go other places over the last number of years, is we're committed to our virtual school having about the same class sizes as our brick and mortar schools, and that's really an intent to give students the kind of personalized education that they would get if they were in a classroom with the teacher. That's one of the things that I think we'll see as a difference as we begin to, you know, step into this and also interact with.
So, Dr. Jaeger, to that point, the distribution of students per grade, we could see some grades filling up faster and then openings in others, meaning 1,000 students isn't necessarily where we end up based on who is really interested in their age level.
Right. Right. It could be, it could be less, you know, based on what that looks like. One of the things that's great about the virtual program and what has been put together for our system is we will step our staffing at the pace our students enroll, if that makes sense. So as we have applications in, we'll say, "Okay, at this point, we look like we have about enough first graders to add a first grade section," and that way, we won't get our staffing out of whack with our buildings and have an undue impact on our buildings. So they've worked really closely with HR to make sure that as we have applications in, that we sequence the staffing part at the same time. They, of course, have the matrix of everything we need for, you know, 1,000 students across the system, but if we would get it 700, something like that, then our staffing would be designed to support about 700.
And based on conversations with some of the others who have done this before, do we anticipate that we know where we're going to be a little bit heavy? Or is it very evenly distributed?
It varies very across the way. It's really hard to predict. So, you know, the closest that we have is with Valleys, but we've been watching their numbers, and their numbers are a little bit, you know, all of the, and they don't have elementary just yet, and so it's really hard to look at it, but we know what Lawrence has in their system, and that's really where we modeled our program after, just because they're already established and, you know, had many years to be behind.
One of the things that makes us a little unsure in terms of the overall enrollment numbers until this point, most of the virtual schools that have been established in the state of Kansas have been established in a way that students from the entire state can attend the virtual school. Our intent is to take care of our students, our families in Olathe, so there's not a model where we can necessarily go to and say, "Okay, when you just serve your own students, what does that typically look like?" So we're at a little bit of a disadvantage, you know, in terms of predicting that way. You know, one of the things that we're looking at as we track numbers also is what's happened in terms of our transition from remote back to in-person. We've had a swing of probably about 1,300 kids, I think, since the beginning of the year from remote back to in-person, and even when we were back, went full back, you know, full back in at the secondary level, the transfers actually were from remote back to in-person, not the other way. And so our families, many of them are migrating that direction right now. But again, that's why we want to be pretty clear about what this is and what it isn't, and give our families plenty of time to make a good decision for their kids.
And as Dr. Jaeger mentioned, wanting to maintain those class sizes, it also works on the lower end, because ultimately, this has to be financially viable for us. So if, you know, in particular, if there's a class that we just don't have enough students to be able to transition staff from a school to virtual, those are some of the decisions that'll have to be made. So it's going to be very fluid based on the type of enrollment we have and how that'll look, and I think the design that they've put together will help us be able to be nimble enough to meet the needs and still do what we need to do from both an instructional standpoint and a fiscal standpoint.
Where's the physical? Okay, I forget where it's, the teacher's going to be located physically.
We're hoping we can use your garage, Mr. Geary.
Well, that can cover probably two classes at Ravenwood, maybe.
You know, that's a really good question. As you know, we have some buildings in the district where we're really pressed for space, somewhere we're not pressed as much. Most virtual schools, actually, the staff operates typically out of their home, and so that is our intent for the most part right now. We know that we're going to have some staff that we probably are going to need to have onsite somewhere just to access materials and resources and those kinds of things. But the beauty of the platform in terms of our curriculum resources that we're using for this is they're all designed exclusively for virtual, so there shouldn't be a need, like there's been this year, that I may need to be in my classroom so I can access all my materials to instruct my students, that kind of thing. Not your garage. That was a bad joke.
Yeah, there's probably some things in there I haven't seen either.
And so, will you say it again? When is enrollment cutoff date?
So the enrollment cutoff date is April 16.
And that's because we have to know if it's financially viable, if, how many of these 91 teachers we can hire.
Right, exactly.
And how are we communicating out? Email, social media, the whole shebang, or?
Yes.
I want to make sure everybody has the opportunities, you know?
Yeah, so there, so far, there's been two emails that have gone out to the whole district, and just letting them know that this is an opportunity. district and just letting them know that this is an opportunity for next year and, and where to find the information. And along with the questionnaire and all that kind of stuff, it's all within the notes and the letters that have gone home. And then also the remote teachers are doing, they're sending it out to their families because that's most likely the group that we're going to see in the virtual school. So, so it's, the word is getting out there and, and we're excited to get the thing rolling.
Awesome. Out of the 91 applicants, are they internal or?
They are all internal.
All internal?
Yeah.
Awesome. That's it for now.
Any other questions?
Are you having fun, Ryan? We didn't get to hear from you.
Sorry.
What are you most excited about?
I'm excited that we're going to meet the need of some kids that aren't getting their needs met and just having the opportunity to really reach everybody at the best place that we can. Yeah.
Awesome. We're excited too.
Mr. Gary, can I answer one of the questions that didn't get caught by you?
Hopefully.
You were asking about talking to families who have done virtual before, and I just wanted to make sure you knew, we've been talking to families who have done remote this year as well as some families in our community who are virtual outside of Olathe and just processing what works best and what isn't working for you. And really modeling and making adjustments.
Yeah, that's great.
I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things I feel like we hear most is like, how come you're not listening to, I mean, we are in a lot of ways, but this is one way that we can certainly, if we're people that are reaching out to us saying we want to be part of this, then let's certainly take advantage of that. And next year's virtual school is going to look different than probably for them even versus, because of what we've endured this last year. So I'm glad we're listening to, to their stuff. Thank you.
And again, to these guys' credit, they've walked through the classroom door of almost every remote teacher in the district, if not every remote teacher in the district this year, just to get feedback, check in, how's it going, what's working, what's not, those kinds of things. So, and then also different meetings with teachers this year and things like that, too. So it's been an evolving process that we never expected to happen until about August this year, so they've done a great job with it.
Yeah, there's a lot to be proud of with our remote teachers.
So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so next, we're going to do a transition to dyslexia and structured literacy. So I'm going to invite Kim Dahl and Linda Boxberger to come up. You've heard from Kim and Linda before. They're both experts in the field of reading and literacy and the work that they've done. And I think I alluded to this a little bit at our last board meeting, but, you know, we have been tremendously fortunate in our district that a lot of the things the State Department of Education has required us to begin doing around dyslexia and structured, or the science of reading, that sort of piece. We started about three years ago when our district went for the Competitive Link Grant, was awarded about $3.2 million. That really gave us a jump start on a lot of the work that we need to be doing because of the requirements from KSTE. And Kim and Linda and Kim Hawkins at the early childhood level, who's not with us tonight, but they've really led the lion's share of that work in terms of meeting with people who are experts in the field, working with our dyslexia consultant that we have on staff with us as a district, Stacy Cates, who wasn't able to be with us tonight. But they interface with her literally on a weekly basis to try to make decisions and recommendations and research and those kinds of things. So I say all that to say, they've had a tremendous lift and a tremendous amount of work over the last number of years that has included input from all of our teachers and our staff across the system, and also balancing that with the needs of our community at the same time. So I'm excited for you just to get an update from them tonight, where we are and what are the things that we've accomplished, what are the things we're going to be doing next, and kind of some of those long-term things as well, so.
Thank you for having us tonight. Linda and I are very excited to share with you all of the hard work that not only the two of us have put in, but really just Learning Services and educators across our district have put in to make the moves that need to be made for our readers. So with that, I would like to just kind of address the Kansas Department of Education expectations of every district in the state of Kansas. So what you see here is kind of a list of the items that we need to make sure that we are hitting. And it starts with a science of reading training that is six hours long. And as a learning services team, we decided that we wanted to make sure that every staff member in the district heard that message and had that training. So instead of targeting just our ELA teachers and our special education teachers, we decided everyone needs to care about this. Everyone needs to know the details. And so that six-hour training, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about in detail in the next slide. Another component that the state is expecting us to have is structured literacy in place. It is the core instruction that has to happen so that our students can learn to read, particularly at the elementary level, when that's when we need to catch them and do what's right. And so you can see the graphic on the right covers what structured literacy is. It has six components: phonological awareness, phonics, or as they call it, sound-symbol related, syllables, morphology, syntax, and semantics. Those are the core pieces or the elements that we need to cover with our elementary students and our struggling readers even at the secondary level. But we also have to make sure that it is explicit instruction and that it is systematic and cumulative. So that leads to looking at phonics resources, particularly at the elementary level. And Linda's going to talk about that in just a little bit. We also have to have a screener. This screener is the way for us to cast a wide net and make sure that we know which students we have in our system who have the potential to struggle if they are not instructed in the way that we've seen in the structured literacy. So we're going to really just have that strong capability to capture all of our students that need the help and get them the help that they need. So that sort of leads us into the MTSS process. The state of Kansas has outlined some very specific things that we have to be doing in our multi-tiered system of support. And in Olathe, we've had that going. What we did in response to the literacy mandate from the state is develop an MTSS leadership team. And this team is a group of fantastic Learning Services folks, and not just around literacy, but with math, BSL, SED, and ELL, and of course, literacy. And one of the things that we've been doing is just really ensuring that our MTSS protocols are consistent with what the state is asking. We also have to provide targeted intervention. We are going to have students who that core, even the really strong core instruction in structured literacy is not going to be enough. So we'll have to have targeted intervention. And those screeners will help us get to that targeted intervention and really provide the extra support that those students need. And as Dr. Jaeger mentioned, we are just incredibly thankful that we had the Link Grant to give us a leg up and be able to finance some of these things early on. So that training that our entire staff has been through is six hours, and part one was a huge success, was January 5th. And we covered, Stacy Cates, our dyslexia consultant, covered brain research and what dyslexia is and is not for our staff. And then Linda went into the three components of structured literacy, the first three, which were phonological awareness, phonics, and syllables. Then, April 16th, we're going to complete this task. We can check it off, and we will cover the final three, morphology, semantics, and syntax with our staff. The exciting news is that learning won't stop. We're not going to stop at just the six hours. What we will do is continue, as you can see the additional learning opportunities, is really decide what does each group of educators need in terms of understanding literacy at their level, and start developing some ongoing annual training for, for all of our staff. So it's fresh and there, and we can definitely address those issues. With the Link Grant, we have also been able to provide quite a few of our educators letters training. It is a deep dive into the science of reading. And I would, I kind of tell people it's like a graduate course in the science of reading. So we've been able to do that. And with the grant, we are also sending a small group of K-12 educators through letters training to become facilitators of that so that we have sustainability within our, our system to continue reaching and giving that letters training to more and more of our staff members. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to them.
So along with that training that we did, we did a dyslexia simulation. And that's really actually how we kicked off our training at the beginning because we needed our teachers to sit and stand in the shoes, somewhat the shoes, of a student who is striving in the area of reading. So I know we've heard a comment about that. And it is very critical that we have a different blend when we look at our students. And that's one of the reasons we're going to continue with this training. Knowledge is key, as we know, but we also have to have a tool to deliver that explicit instruction. And that's what you approved last, last month at your board meeting. And we just greatly appreciate that because the 95% group four program that we are going to put into place is going to be a game changer for our students. It's going to, it's going to provide our students the explicit instruction in phonics that they need. And so we're going to give an overview training. I get emails all the time saying, Linda, when can we have this? We need this now. They're so hungry for something to use to support their students. We're going to give them overview training in April at our PD day, and then we're going to dive in a lot deeper in August so we can make sure we are ready on day one for our students who will take the classroom doors for us. Another key point is that we have to make sure that we're getting feedback from our teachers. We need to know where is the knowledge that they need to be built? Where do they feel comfortable? What's working for them in the resource and where do they need more support in the resource? So next year, we're going to dedicate a lot of open communication and then a lot of PD that's going to support them throughout the year. As you can see, I have K through five listed. K through three is a sole four program that really targets the skills that are appropriate and evidence-based that need to be taught at those certain grade levels. Once we get into fourth and fifth grade, what we're doing is we really want those students to have P8 phonological awareness, phonics, and syllables, a good awareness of that by the time they get out of third grade. That moves us into another component or element of structured literacy, which is going to be morphology. That takes us from just being able to read a word to be able to understand the meaning behind the word because of the parts that are in the word. So this is how we're going to scaffold them into the main piece of it, knowing that vocabulary is critical for students when they get into the intermediate grades, but also when they get into middle school and high school in their content areas. So along with that, we know in that core program, we're going to meet many needs of students. I think we're going to have dramatic impacts very quickly because our students' light bulbs are going to go on. They're going to see how to break the code of phonics. But not all of our students are going to have that immediate reaction. And so that's where we're going to have a couple of different types of screeners. Couple of the screeners we're going to have are called the universal screeners. That's where it's going to be a really general one that's going to be more nationally normed that can kind of spread by the student. When we see that happening, we would want to take a deeper dive into where is their deficit. What comes along with 95% group is called the Pasi and the PSI. Those are screening tools that break down phonological awareness and phonics to a granular level, and then we're able to target the exact need. Once we can target that exact need and that deficit in the student, we can tie it directly to the intervention resource that we have through 95% group to the exact precise lesson that that student is going to have. Another tool that we're going to have is an oral reading fluency, or fluency. And that's going to be another way to monitor students' word accuracy, their comprehension, and their fluency. Also on this slide, you're going to see a list of kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth. The state is going to have us monitoring and turning in data in certain areas, especially in grades K1 and 2. What we love about, one of the tools that we're using is AMIRA, is one that we are kind of diving into and really exploring because it meets all of the state expectations. So anything we would have to report would be generated by AMIRA. It gives us the opportunity to not piece together our data, but have it housed in one area, and that kind of keeps confusion down with our teachers when they're trying to analyze and they're trying to have conversations in their PLS, whether it's with the grade level or if we're talking vertically amongst elementary and middle school, or if we're talking fourth grade to fifth grade teachers. So once we have those students through those screening tools, and we really have identified the students that we want to support and the exact skills, we move into that targeted intervention. So in the MTSS system that we have, I'm going to talk about in reading. You will see up here that, I know there's many areas in reading, but we have chosen to focus on phonological awareness and phonics. That is where our biggest gap is. If you listen to people talk, if there are 100 students and they are reading below grade level, 94 of those students will have a phonics deficit and only six of them will have a true comprehension. So what we want to do is we felt like that is how we are going to impact the most. So we are starting with our core and our intervention in this, in these two areas. We have 21 elementary schools that currently utilize it to some capacity at the intervention level. We have one middle school who's very successfully implementing it. And then we're going to continue that training and bring on the rest of the schools in the near future. And then after we feel like we have phonics and phonological awareness under control in our core and our intervention, we're going to go ahead and pull on a comprehension intervention and a fluency intervention because we know that those are going to be needs that our students will have. But we're trying to be really strategic at how we approach deficits that we have in the area of literacy and support our students. And I have to tell you, we are beyond excited with the direction that we're moving. As, as Dr. Jaeger was saying, we've, we've made a lot of shifts and we've made a lot of moves from practice that was currently used in Olathe, and, and we're excited to be on this new journey. So any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'll start. Awesome job. I'm so excited about this. So you just, we're talking about the 21 elementary schools and one middle school, and we're casting the wide net with the screeners. So what if you have a kiddo that's not in those schools? Can you escalate their ability to be engaged at this level?
So we have the luxury in our January training in the afternoon to actually train all elementary teachers on these screening tools. So those are not isolated, it just says 21. So what happens is when they go through, and they are now administering this, we're doing it district-wide now, that we're able to highlight and identify students more. And that's when they come typically to, to myself or to maybe one of my specialists, and we go and provide support.
Fantastic. And would you talk a little bit about the screening tools? Because I, I wasn't aware of what that looks like. Would you, I, I don't want to preempt you, but would you tell kind of what that is?
Sure. It's a one-on-one in the Pasi and the PSI, the screening tool that identifies the exact need. It's a one-on-one assessment, so I'd sit down with the student. And there are two components to it in the, in the phonics screener. There's going to be a nonsense word fluency, and really what we're looking is it's not going to be real words, it's going to be nonsense words, and they have to read those just fluently. If they're not able to read them, then of course it's counted incorrect. And what we're really looking at is the automaticity and the understanding of the sounds. If they're not able to read that fluently, we know that they don't have that in place. You have to think about this. People sometimes question nonsense words, but really any word you come to that you don't know what it is, it kind of looks like a nonsense word to you anyway. And so in our syllables, when you break the multi-syllable words apart, they look like nonsense words. And so we have to make sure that they are fluent at reading this. So that is one component, is nonsense word fluency. The other component is reading it in a sentence. Those are very isolated. Like, one of the skills will be only focused on short vowels. That's all it focuses on. The next skill might focus on blends, and then it might focus on digraphs or long vowel silent e. It breaks all of the phonics skills down so we can see precisely where those students are functioning.
And is there, is there an element of reading to the computer at some point in time?
So in AMIRA, they're it. AMIRA is actually an artificial tool that the students can talk to, and she actually listens, and then they can give reading records and they can give analysis back to the teachers.
Yeah, I didn't know about that. This is pretty cool, huh?
Yeah, it's, there, there is not, not too many tools out there that provide this capability that AMIRA provides us right now.
Awesome. Awesome.
So a couple of things I might point out, you know, Linda has referenced KSD several times. And one of the things in terms of our universal screener and all sorts of diagnostic tools, they have to be in compliance with what KSD is asking for. And so that's really an area where we've worked with our dyslexia consultant to say, okay, we know that we need to do a universal screener, which means that we're going to touch everybody so we can find kid that may be demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia. But then we also have to have a diagnostic tool so we could drill down and figure out exactly where that is. And so that's been a lot of the work that Linda and Kim have done with Stacy Cates, our dyslexia consultant, to make sure that once we do our screening, we have kind of a complete puzzle. We're able to say, okay, here is the support that that student needs. Um, and that's been really, really helpful. Uh, KSD hasn't said, you know, here are the resources you have to use, but they've said to us, here are the components that we're looking for in your screeners and your diagnostic tools, um, that will lend you to being able to support students. So it's, it's been a really scientific process, if you will. But the, the other part of it, um, that I so appreciate about Kim and Linda, the work that they've done with our teacher teams and the people piling in our assessments across the system, is we're also trying to do in a way that it doesn't have a massive impact on our teachers in terms of hours and hours of, you know, time with every student. Instead of doing that, we can figure out who are the, the students that we're concerned about and let's focus on supporting them rather than spending a lot of time going through it with every single student, if that makes sense. So that lens has been very helpful as we thought about looking at it.
And Dr. Yager sends Kim. Dr. Hawkins is a part of this team. Do we start with early childhood anywhere with dyslexia diagnosis or is it just for the K-12?
So just also for clarification, as a school system, we won't diagnose kids. So we will continue to say, you know, we see characteristics of dyslexia, those kinds of things. Um, that's something we're being very careful with just in terms of clarification across our system. Um, in the last couple of years, uh, Dr. Hawkins and working with her staff in early childhood, they've also done letters trainings and some of the things that were referenced here. Um, and one of the benefits to them being a little bit of a smaller group is all of their staff already has, uh, many of those training components. And so where it's taking us a big lift to do everybody in the system, a lot of the components, they've already actually had within early childhood programming. So, um, it's a little bit different with, you know, three and four-year-old in terms of, uh, being able to look at nonsense words and some of those things. But a lot of that is where Ange Net and her team in terms of special services and the expertise that they bring to the table. It's more about probably watching for this is a warning sign. These are kids that we need to be paying close attention to, that kind of thing. Is that accurate-ish? Okay.
Awesome. Thank you.
Is, okay.
Dr. Yager, excuse me. Nobody sends their student off to school expecting that they're going to have a, um, challenge learning in any particular area. Uh, do we have a plan for how to bring parents in to talk to them about what's happening and the, we're not diagnosing, but evaluating the challenges and then how we apply remedies?
Yeah. So there's a couple of things I, I would say to that. And Ange Net, if she wants, she's welcome to add anything to this as well. But, you know, we, we have a lot of different processes in schools to support kids. Um, you know, they referenced in the, this PowerPoint, our MTSS process or our multi-tiered system of supports process. And our expectation really is that if students are receiving on an ongoing basis intervention because there's a gap in something, um, it wouldn't necessarily have to be literacy and reading. It could be math, that the parents are partners at the table so that they understand students' current level of performance and they're able to also interact with the teacher. And, and sometimes it's say, wow, I've seen the same thing at home. And that, you know, that creates a, a good conversation. A lot of that's informal, um, for a long time in terms of the actual conversation and those pieces. Um, our schools are really good at monitoring data and working with our school psychologists and, and staff members within our system. If for some reason the, the interventions aren't working, our students aren't responding to intervention, then it would become more of a formal special education evaluation process. And parents absolutely are involved in that. They, you know, grant permission and are part of the meetings and those kinds of things to do that as well. I don't know if there's anything anybody else wants to add. Okay. Did that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Okay.
So, so there's, so there's not a formal IEP created around if someone is, potentially has dyslexia? Is that, is that correct?
Typically, an IEP would not be necessary. So if we have our core instruction down, which means what we provide all kids and then support for kids who are showing some characteristics by providing those MTSS interventions, the goal of MTSS really is to prevent kids from needing a special education, IEP, a special education services. But for a small number of our population, they need something even more specific than that. So Ange Net's gonna...
He's, he's answering the questions perfectly. Um, again, if we move to an evaluation, that means that we have a large amount of data collected with interventions that we tried in the classroom, um, that we've done in, as part of that general education data collection process. The gift with where we're headed is that 95% group of ladies can, can shout from the rooftop behind me, is that it's going to give us some really concrete data that is going to be, if there's going to be a lot of continuity between, um, buildings and our resources are going to look the same between buildings as we come to the table to talk about really what this, this child has made progress in and what they're still lacking in. When we, when we move to an evaluation for special education, regardless of what we're looking at, the eligibility criteria is the same. It's a two-pronged factor. So we have to have eligibility in a particular category and then we have to have a need that accompanies that for special education services. Helpful? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Gary?
So I was just gonna ask, so what does this like practically look like for somebody that is in our system that has, you know, been diagnosed with dyslexia? You know, what are the changes? How, how does it look for somebody, uh, that we've already identified in the system?
So we would have them, we would use that diagnostic tool at the Pasi and PSI and we're going to see that exact precise need of where the breakdown in the phonics mastery is happening. And then they would go into an intervention group, um, and with anybody else at that skill. And really that's what I think we look at is we have to, we might not just look at the label of what a student is bringing along with them, but it's really the skill breakdown because not all students, there are, not all students who have the same skill deficit are going to have the same diagnosis. So they're going to have the same history that goes along with them. What we're trying to do is we're trying to pinpoint that exact need. So if a student has dyslexia, they're going to be inside a grid just like all the other students that we said. They'll be monitored and then we'll look and see are they making progress or are they not. If they're not making progress, that takes us to a conversation to go back to the IEP and to back to the table of all the stakeholders to see what would be the best, um, design of instruction for students at that point.
And we, we don't ignore middle school or high school students with dyslexia. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We try early intervention, right?
Right. We will have, you know, there, even if there's early intervention, we'll probably still have students who move in or, um, have not been caught, you know, um, at, at the right time. So that is the beauty of 95% group and why we decided to go with it at the middle level in particular, so that if a student is still in need, we are all, as Dr. Yager spoke, we're all still talking the same language. And so with that, I was also going to add oftentimes at the secondary level as well, while they are getting that specific targeted intervention at the secondary level, they're still faced with all of that text in all of their different classrooms. And so the power in educating all of our staff members is to help them understand accommodations that might be in a 504 or an IEP for a student who's struggling with reading. So if they can better understand why that accommodation is there, they can better use that accommodation or even use others that they've learned through all of our trainings as well. So that's, that's our goal at the secondary level.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Okay. Moving along to action consent. Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to pull out regarding these 11 action items? If not, can I get a motion?
I move to approve consent agenda items number 4.01 to 4.11 as presented.
Second. Two seconded, sorry, Ms. Schultz. Okay. Motion by Ms. Felter, second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliff?
Yes.
All right. And on to action bids, contracts, agreements, 5.01 to 5.05. Does anyone have any questions regarding these five items? And if not, can I get a motion to approve?
I'd move to approve action items, uh, 5 dot 01 through 5 dot 05 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeon, second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliff?
Yes.
All right. And, um, we have two action other items. Let's just take, uh, I know we have at least one question. I'm pretty sure we do on 6.02. So let's just take them one at a time. If anyone has any questions about our board meeting, otherwise can I get a motion for that?
I'd move to approve action other items, 6 dot 01 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary, second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliff?
Yes.
All right. And on to 6.02. Um, was there a question? Mr. Gary, did you have a question on that or?
I was just gonna ask about if we can, uh, related to some of the facility and rental fees, how we, I see we're requesting that we don't increase, uh, at this point, any facility fees or anything. I'm just curious how we compare or if we've done that or if we can do that going forward or if there's, um, comments about that.
Sure. We're scheduled to do that next year. We did it two years ago and, uh, analyzed, we analyzed our internal labor costs, utility costs and, and, uh, set those, uh, with COVID this year. It's not a good year to measure and we've been trying to get it like on a three-year rotation. So, uh, Mrs. Osborne and, uh, uh, Mr. Palangi, uh, both of their groups will start to study that and next year make adjustments as necessary.
So there is some potential then next year for some changes to fees?
I would assume because, uh, the costs will, the costs always go up. So we'll recalibrate that and set it accordingly.
Okay. I think that's all I had.
All right. Then can I get a motion?
I'd move to, uh, approve action item other 6 dot 01. Sorry, 6 dot 02.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeon, second by Mr. Gary.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right. And then we have, uh, future action items, 7.01 to 7.10. I would just note, we have the KSB nominating committee and government relations. I think, Leeta, were you on government relations? And then Brian, were you on?
I am.
Yeah. So just think about that if you want to do that again or pass that on to somebody else. Um, and then on to written information. We have 8.01, the, uh, March Ed Start Directors Report and the Parent Teacher Conference Totals for this spring. There's no comments about that. I think we'll move on to board topics for discussion. Does anyone have any topics they'd like to discuss?
I have a couple. John Hutchison, um, I want to brag on you because I think we owe you a debt of gratitude. Our utility bills weren't as dramatic because of something John had strategically had us do, join a co-op. Is that accurate? Do you mind sharing a little bit about, um, why we're...
I will take zero credit for that. Actually, Mr. Grollup has been doing that for years and all it monitors, uh, the co-op purchases for all of our energy and, and does analysis to try and figure out if it's in our best interest. So this time it worked very well. We lock in our rates and there are some neighboring districts that are facing some astronomical increases. Now, whether or not that'll all recalibrate and adjust next year, as all of us are going to face, is yet to be seen. But we did not miss a beat in where we thought we did.
Well, that's a big deal. To the tune of like 1.8 million comparatively, you know...
One of our neighbors was facing over a million dollar increase a month.
Yeah. So even though you're kicking the can down the road, I want to thank you. Thank you very much. So that's what I wanted to...
If I could add to, to that just a little bit to also point out some of the work that Mr. Hutchison and his team have been doing. Oletha has been, um, one of the districts, uh, over the last several years, taking the lead in helping make sure that we're monitoring the decisions that are made around tariffs, rates, um, classifications. Uh, and you all have, have helped approve, um, some of those actions and, and working with a, a law firm that has helped represent school districts. Because when you get to, um, those types of discussions and, um, those rates and tariffs are set, if you're not at the table, you're, you're served for dinner, um, so to speak. And that, um, through those actions and helping coordinate with other school districts, that, um, this would have been for, um, many a, an, an even bigger hit to their budgets, but that, uh, schools have been able to, to be segmented into, um, a unique tariff group, uh, so that we're, we're paying utility rates that are more comparable to our actual usage and cost versus being lumped into so many other areas. And it's, it's very complicated. Um, the, most of us wouldn't understand how, how those rates are, are done. But if you, if you really look at it, residential is subsidizing, um, so many, uh, other areas. And that's, that's been a key piece. Um, and that return on investment has probably been five times in savings just over, over the last couple of years. So, um, again, the, the progressive approach to, to our energy management, um, watching our utilities and, um, uh, really taking a look at that, knowing that that has an impact on our budget that seems to ever increase. Um, when we can save dollars on our operations, that's another dollar we can spend on our instructional side. So, um, uh, well done for, for the, um, business finance, Chris Grollup and, and, and others to maintain that for us.
We're so grateful. And if I'm right, John, I think you're the one, year one here as our superintendent that brought that, um, recommendation to the board to get involved, to be at the table. So we're not served for dinner. So thank you for that. And it paid off in bucket loads this past month. We're grateful.
I was gonna make a comment about just generally been back to school at secondary level for I think about a month now. And, and just wanted to say, you know, thank you to our community in general. I know the teachers, the staff, we've heard, you know, I think the students are, are doing a good job of following the rules. They may not like the rules. The parents may not like the rules, but we heard about prom. We heard about graduation tonight. And I think it's, it's important that we continue to follow some of these safety measures to, to get our kids through prom, get our kids through graduation and some of those things. So while it might not be fun for the last, whatever we have left, six weeks of school or eight weeks of school, um, it's going to be great for the kids to be able to hopefully protect them as best we can to get to those points of, of really big moments in their lives that we've already missed out on a lot of different things. And so I want to just say thank you to the, to any students that are watching for some reason and, uh, and parents that are, parents that are also, you know, maybe don't agree with it, but certainly I think it's important that we're doing this for, for them because we've, we've tried to make it safe, but we've also tried to get closer to normal. So just thanks for helping with that process, getting to prom and graduation. So.
Excellent. Anything else? All right. Then on to the superintendent comments.
Um, ju- just a couple. And, and as I, as I listened to our presentation, um, tonight, uh, whether it's around graduation or, or virtual, and particularly around our, our literacy approach, um, how proud I am of, of the staff and the school board in always wanting to push us to the next level and working to, to do that and you all supporting those efforts. And when I think about the literacy, um, you could turn the mic over to me for the next 30 minutes because that's something, as you know, is very, very important to me and the work that we're doing and the progress we're beginning to make. No Child Left Behind is, has a bad connotation when you bring it up, but the, the one positive without question that came out of, um, all of that was the research and the work done around the acquisition of literacy. And it is a science and it is complicated and it is sequential. And there are certain skills that have to be, um, acquired and mastered in a sequence. And we now know... skills that have to be acquired and mastered in a sequence, and we now know, which is what letters really, as it was referenced, digs into, is the science of how do you learn it and what sequence? Because skipping steps creates gaps that make it very difficult to get filled. And it is not, as you asked questions, it is not a K5, it is a K12 issue, and it's gonna be very important and intensive and a never-ending process to continue for our staff to be educated to the point that they're truly K12 literacy experts, to know how that applies and how to help students. And once you understand the sequential component of that, of the skills that are necessary in that process, then you know how to help students that are struggling, having the screening tools. All of those pieces have to be there together to be able to make a difference in where our students are in acquiring literacy, which is the key to education in life, is that skill. You can't learn math if you can't read, or social studies, or anything else, that's the foundational piece. And Olatha is poised to continue to make that progression, to look at it K12, and to meet the needs of our students, and that's no small task. It doesn't end next year, the year after, it will be ongoing, and we'll just continue to get stronger and stronger every year with your support. So I just want to thank everyone that's been engaged so far with that, and will continue to be, as our staff focuses more and more and understands how all those pieces fit together and how they can help our students, I think sky's the limit. So that concludes my remarks this evening.
All right. I think we just have one executive session. So can I get a motion for, it's 11.01?
How much time do we need?
I can do it. I make a motion to move that the board adjourned executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personnel performance pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma, and that the board return to their regular meeting at 7:35 PM.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary, thank you by Mr. McKean.
Mr. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.